I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council held on Tuesday, June 6, 2023, commencing at 7:01 PM. I will be chairing the mayor tonight as Mayor Pro Tem. I will start with Roll, starting with Councilmember Fields.
Here.
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 And I am also here, Council President Forsyth. First item on the agenda is Special Orders of the Day, a proclamation for Pride Month. Whereas the City of Redmond is committed to the principles of equity and to upholding the dignity, humanity, and respect of all people, and whereas Pride Month began in June of 1969, on the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall Inn uprising in New York City, and was initiated by transgender women of color like Marsha P. Johnson, Sylvia Rivera, along with the gay community and their allies who protested police violence, discriminatory laws and practices, and whereas the fight for dignity, respect, equality, and inclusion for a lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, asexual, intersex, two-spirited-plus community has been hard-fought in the streets and the courts, but the struggle still continues, and whereas racism, ableism, misogyny, homophobia, transphobia are interconnected and result in continued experiences of prejudice, discrimination, invisibility, marginalization, physical and social and emotional attacks, and lack protections for fundamental rights and dignity in hospitals, school, public accommodations, and other spaces, and whereas Pride Month is a time to reflect on the trials of the LGBTQIA+ community has endured and advancing their human rights as human beings, it is also a time to celebrate the communal and individual contributions, as well as reaffirm our commitment to stand in solidarity with their ongoing struggles against discrimination and injustice. Whereas the City of Redmond joins the call to action, inspiring us to live up to the nation's values of equality, liberty, and justice for all, and encourages everyone to stand in our efforts and to end violence and discrimination against the LGBTQIA+ community. Therefore, Angela Burney, Mayor of the City of Redmond, does hereby proclaim June 2023 Pride Month in the City of Redmond to celebrate, honor, dignify, protect our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, asexual, intersex, two-spirit members of the community, and affirm the city's commitment to align our values and practices so that everyone in the greater Redmond community can enjoy life without prejudice, bias, or discrimination. Accepting tonight's proclamation is Deputy Director Seraphy Allen and Senior Planner Mason McGonigal. The next item on our agenda is a presentation from Evergreen Health. Presenting tonight are Tim McLaughlin and Chief Marketing Communications Officer Peggy Brown.
Thank you for having us tonight. As indicated, Peggy is our Chief Marketing Communication Officer, and I serve on the Board of Commissioners for Evergreen Health. We're going to spend just a few minutes with you tonight to talk a bit about Evergreen's history, some of the accomplishments and challenges that we've had over the years, a bit about who we are, and some of the things that we're faced with today and into the future. This is one of the first presentations that does not have the word COVID in it, and had we had this certainly a year ago, two years ago, and so forth, it would have been, you know, a major, major subject matter. Not that COVID is behind us by any means. I think the last time I looked, we had about three to five low, single-digit patients in our hospital with COVID, but not admitted for COVID, rather admitted for other reasons and then tested. So I would say it's largely behind us, fortunately and thankfully. But there are a lot of implications, a lot of repercussions and indirect challenges that we face as a result of COVID, and that shadow of COVID is going to be with us, I think, for quite some time. And we'll talk a little bit about some of those indirect implications in these next few minutes. The Evergreen Hospital, we feel that we are a community-owned hospital, so all of us, residents of our district, are effectively owners of Evergreen Health. We at Evergreen Health realize that. We feel accountable to our community, and that commitment to local access to care is never away from the front of our minds. Evergreen was formed by the local voters back in the late '60s, when King County Public Hospital District II was created. In fact, the public named Evergreen at that time, and we opened our doors, our operations, in early February of 1972. So we celebrated our 50th anniversary just last year. So for all of you who are residents of this district, thank you for your generous support over the years, and congratulations for 50, 50-plus years now of advancement of the health care of the residents of our district. As a community-owned hospital in a public hospital district, it does have a lot of advantages that maybe some other hospitals might not. We're local, convenient access to care and services. We're independent. We're governed by an elected Board of Commissioners that base our decisions on what the local needs we feel are. We're not-for-profit, and our mission to serve our community members. The residents support Evergreen through a levy which is about 2% of the property taxes. As fellow community residents, just again, thank you for your support over these past 51 years. This is an aerial view of Evergreen. You can see the before and after. I won't quiz you on which is which, but back in the early '70s, you can see there was not a lot around Evergreen, and the picture on the right is a picture today of the Evergreen main campus in Kirkland. The middle area of that right-hand picture would be the, you know, some of the structures that you see originally from the early 1970s. I think today, Evergreen would be considered not just the small community hospital that it was upon establishment in the early 1970s, but I would describe it as an independent, comprehensive health system, but it retains much of its community health culture and commitment to the local community. And I think that's what sets Evergreen apart from other similarly-sized hospitals. Peggy, if you could go to the next slide here. This is a description, a bit of our services. The Public Hospital District II that we are part of is an area of King County that incorporates Redmond, Kirkland, Duval. We go east to Duval, west to Kenmore, up to the Snohomish County line, and south to the Plateau and parts of Sumamish. And when we talk about comprehensive care, you can see there's a continuum of care. Our maternity center welcomed over 4,500 babies in 2022. If you look back since our founding, about 150,000 births have happened at Evergreen, and so that is a very clear linkage to our community, 150,000, and all the family and relatives of those individuals is really a testament to how we've served and how we're linked to the community that we represent. We have two emergency departments and seven urgent care centers. One of each is located here in Redmond at Bella Potega. We also opened a primary care, a second primary care facility in Redmond Town Center in 2022. Among our specialty practices, and many of them, among them is a senior geriatrics center. We also have a, and what is fairly unique to Evergreen is a 15-bed hospice care center right on our campus. You also see the, we have the largest home health hospice care service in the Putus Sound region, and there are a number of areas where we can't do it alone. And so in order to provide quality, accessible care, we do partner from time to time. A good example is partnering with the Fred Hutch to have oncology services on campus at our Kirkland location. I also should point out that our East Side Health Alliance is a partnership with Overlake Hospital for certain service lines, such as neurosciences and cardiac, where critical mass is very important, and so that's been very successful. And not on this page is a operating agreement that we reached back in 2015 with Valley General in Monroe, now called Evergreen Monroe, to provide services in that area, and it also provides accessible care to some of our district residents that live in the northeast section of our district. Talk a little bit about some of the recognition that we've received. This is a busy chart. I won't go into a lot of detail here, but I will point out a couple of items. We have, for the third consecutive year, been named from Healthgrades, which is a Colorado-based nonprofit, as among America's 50 best hospitals, and so that's happened for the last three years. And these are all recognitions from organizations that really focus on comparable data relative to hospitals and providers around the country, areas such as safety, clinical outcomes, and those types of areas. So one other prominent one is the Loun Institute that you see on the right side there. They are a not-for-profit think tank out of Massachusetts, and we were named number one in the country in 2022 for critical care outcomes. And so very, very excited to see some of the recognition that we're gaining nationwide because of the quality within our organization, to the point where it really has become a fundamental area of focus within our culture, is the high quality within Evergreen Hospital. We've been challenged during the COVID years, for sure, but I think the important thing here is we've maintained a lot of these recognitions during the very difficult times since 2020. We have a number of areas where we can demonstrate commitment to the community. I won't read off all of these, but certainly the commitment to youth mental health in many of our schools within our districts is a focal point. We do have a community advisors program, volunteers within our community. Some of the things that are not listed here, some of the subsidies that we provide to areas of service lines, such as hospice and geriatric care, which on their own financial results would not be positive or even neutral to the organization, so we do subsidize a number of those types of service lines for the community. The next couple of slides talk about a few things of what's new, what's happened at Evergreen over the last couple of years. I mentioned earlier that we did open a second primary care facility in Redmond in 2022, opened urgent care facility in Monroe also last year. We also received accreditation or certification as a comprehensive stroke center in 2022, which is really important relative to time-sensitive access to care on the East Side, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. This slide shows some pictures of our new, recently refurbished maternity center. I noted earlier that we are one of the largest maternity hospitals in the state, and that includes the recent work, the expansion of much-needed NICU beds at our Kirkland campus. We also introduced a, and this was a fairly difficult and major transition, but a new electronic medical record system in late 2022, the Epic Platform, which provides a seamless transferring of data from provider to provider, and also a patient portal called MyChart, which provides a lot of good information and accessible functionality to patients. It hasn't been a seamless implementation necessarily, but I think it's well behind us now, and it's going to serve us very well with dividends in the future. This slide is a bit of a busy one, but it's really important, and it's access to care. I think everyone can agree that access to care is essential, but it's typically a very individualized situation. We hear constantly the desire of community members not wanting to cross the bridge into Seattle. That's a key in a lot of the decisions that we make. In some cases, that's important for life-saving or life-changing access to care. I mentioned the comprehensive stroke center a few minutes ago, but our emergency departments, urgent care, stroke center intervention, cardiac intervention is extremely important and very time-sensitive. So access to care, from that standpoint, you can understand how critical the timing of receiving care is. There are other times, though, where there's barriers to seeking care, even just going into Seattle, especially dealing with elderly patients. If you're a caregiver or a provider for that individual, sometimes it's daunting for the time, the tolls, the parking, just navigating downtown can be very difficult for certain individuals, and so we feel that that's another way of providing access to care closer to home. But there are a lot of other challenges related to access to care, and so this chart talks about some of those that are pretty profound, and some of the areas that have impacted us as a result of COVID. I'll start in the upper right-hand corner for a moment about limited bed capacity. The impact of COVID is largely over, as I mentioned earlier, but we did have a very difficult year-end to 2022 and early '23 with COVID, flu, and respiratory viruses. It was sort of a tripledemic, as it was called. And although that has passed, and although there's been a transition over time from inpatient to outpatient procedures, which lessens the need for beds, the aging population and a number of other factors have caused a real bed shortage in the state of Washington, and it's hit particularly hard in the Putus Sound region and at Evergreen as well. There's been a recent survey by the Kaiser Foundation that ranked the state of Washington 51st in the country, behind all the states and the District of Columbia in number of beds and intensive care beds per 1,000 population in the country. So that's really impacting us, and we're seeing a number of areas where it's very difficult to discharge patients, even though the care that they were admitted for in the hospital has been addressed. Being able to discharge patients into behavioral health centers or other rehabilitation or senior centers has been very, very difficult. So bed shortages in those areas are very acute, and so at times, anywhere from 15% to 20% of the beds at Evergreen Hospital are filled by those particular individuals who were not able to easily discharge. So that's just one of the areas that has caused some stress on the system. The other part of this is that the Washington health target for the optimal occupancy rate for hospitals is about 70%, meaning that there's some flexibility there to be able to easily discharge patients, admit patients, move patients from one level of care to another within the hospital, admitting patients from the emergency room or after surgeries. So 70% is that optimal area where hospitals like to be, if at all possible. Hospitals are adept at modifying that and juggling things, for sure. So it's often not at 70, but when it gets up to 80%, it's very difficult, and at 90%, it's extremely difficult. Evergreen's been operating much of this year at 93% occupancy, so it really causes the system to be strained. It caused staffing issues and patient issues as well, in terms of their ability to move from one area to another as they would otherwise. We also have, to the upper left-hand side, longer stays. Aging population obviously means sicker patients. Lack of post-acute care options, as I mentioned earlier, causes a backup in the hospital. And we have seen, as one of the shadow effects of COVID, people holding off on elective surgeries or maybe not going for their normal checkups, and so that's causing more acute issues down the road. And I think we're suffering, in a way, as a community because of that. And then staffing constraints, which I touched upon, but labor costs have been extremely high, and this is well-known, I think, throughout the area, and it affects a lot of industries. But we did have a lot of professionals that left healthcare at the beginning of COVID, retiring maybe prematurely. And then with the labor shortage, needing to bring traveling nurses or agency nurses into the organization to help out, to fill these gaps, as other hospitals are doing as well, has been extremely costly and has really led, among other reasons, to very financial distresses within the hospitals in general, and Evergreen in particular. The impact of all this, on the bottom right-hand side, is longer wait times to get appointments, to get into surgeries, to be seen in ER. We've had a number of times where we've had a backup in the hospital and a lot of individuals who have left without being seen, which is not good for the hospital, but certainly not good for the patients. So these are all areas of concern that I would say are at least indirectly a result of COVID, but other factors as well are causing us to have a really extreme bed shortage within Evergreen and within hospitals within the state of Washington. All this puts pressure on the patient experience. We try to gather input on public sentiment in a lot of ways. We do have, every three years, a detailed community needs assessment. We mentioned, as I mentioned earlier, we have a community advisor group of about 30 area residents that meet monthly with management and the board to provide constructive feedback from their community contacts to us. This, what you see on the chart here, is a survey, a public opinion research study that we did last year, about a year ago, where we interviewed, or we received access to about 500 residents within our district to talk about what are some of the priorities that they feel Evergreen should have. And you see that capacity issues lead the list here, capacity for mental health and just hospital capacity and beds, as well as emergency preparedness plans. And so these are areas that are known to us already, but this just solidifies some of the public comments and feedback that we received. At the end of all of this, and this is my final slide here, at the end of this, Evergreen must grow in order to maintain our support of the community. Since we had our last major expansion, which is what our Silver Tower is, the eight-story tower on our Kirkland campus, population has grown by 27%. And so not only have we had population growth, as I'm sure you're all aware of, but also an aging demographic during that time. We do have, as I mentioned, bed capacity is strained. Emergency readiness is very important for us, not just earthquake preparedness and other natural disasters, but just the pandemic. One of the things that we're very grateful for at Evergreen is that we have, each year, sent multiple members of our staff down to Alabama at the FEMA Training Center for Emergency Preparedness, and I do think that really helped us in the first couple of days of the pandemic. As you may remember, Evergreen was the first hospital in the country to experience and identify COVID patients in our hospital from a senior center that was located close by in Kirkland. And unfortunately, we had many, many patients and unfortunately many deaths because of COVID during those early days. And we do feel like the emergency preparedness helped us along quite a bit in those early days and weeks after discovering COVID at Kirkland. So that's something that we need to continue to be ready for, regardless of the type of As a public hospital district, Evergreen does not have the advantage of funding from a large parent organization, whether it be a for-profit or a large nonprofit hospital system. The one public hospital district advantage that we do have is the possibility of investments funded by resident taxpayers who care about quality, accessible care, close to home, in the form of a UTGO bond ballot measure. We have been successful in the past, but you may remember, we were unsuccessful back in 2019. We came to a 58.5% roughly, but short of the 60% threshold to be successful there. So that is something that is a possibility for us. Currently, the Evergreen Board is focused on financial recovery plans in this kind of post-COVID environment to try to get beyond COVID and try to get back to a more stable financial situation. Again, all hospitals, I think, are dealing with that right now. But we have determined not to place a levy measure on the ballot for this year, but we will, with community input, seriously consider this option in the future. So with that, again, I want to thank you for the few minutes here tonight to talk about Evergreen, and I'll open it up right now for questions, if there are any.
Thank you, Board Commissioner McLaughlin. Council, any questions? Mr. Carson?
Thank you. So I just, one area that I believe you have some offerings in is the addiction recovery segment of the market, and I just, if maybe you could just touch on that briefly, it's, I think, certainly to the seven of us up here and the mayor, who's not in attendance, but it's of particular mind because we often, on a policy level, have to deal with that, the reaction to that, and so I'd love to hear what you have.
Thanks for the question. So as I alluded to earlier, we did, back in 2015, agree to an operational agreement with Evergreen, what is now Evergreen Monroe. And so in Monroe, we do have a recovery center that we feel there's a tremendous need for it, and I think one of the things, one of the benefits of being a system is that we're able to move resources and move patients between the two hospital facilities. Monroe is in Snohomish Public Hospital District I, so it's not in our district, but at the same time, because of the agreement we have, we can move resources, patients, and providers between the two campuses. So that is something that we're, one, make sure that it's available to all who are able and who qualify for it. In general, and this is more of a larger issue with behavioral health, that's an area where we have a number of, I would say at the moment, small initiatives, nothing that's comprehensive by a long shot being enough. But also in Monroe, one of the things that is being actively discussed and planned for is an inpatient behavioral health center. So we are very excited about that. That's not been finalized at the moment, but we're well underway in terms of the planning for that, and that would be something that would be a resource for both districts, and not just, you know, related to Snohomish District I.
Right. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I just want to acknowledge the real struggle and the challenges that the hospital has taken on in the past couple of years, and I really appreciated your presentation to tell us how great things really are going and the challenges that you do have ahead. I personally believe that the funding restrictions that you experience as an independent voter-funded hospital are worth it. The benefits are worth it for our community, and I'm so glad that you're here. I had a very small question, just to help us understand what the community's experiencing on the bed targets, particularly the 70% target. Is that beds total in your system or beds with staffing in your system?
It would be beds within our system.
So beds total, and then up against that. So you're operating at 93%, also facing staffing levels that aren't comfortable at the moment. Is that right?
That's right. And staffing levels, obviously, we've ramped up recruitment. It's a difficult market in terms of supply-demand over these last couple of years for nurses. It's a great time to be a nurse, right, in terms of demand, perhaps not a great time in terms of the stress, right, that they've undergone over these last three-plus years. But it is something where we try to manage as best we can and bring nurses from other parts of the country, which is a common practice among hospitals, really, where the local availability of nurses does not meet the demand. In doing that, traveling nurses do command a premium, and so that ends up putting additional financial pressures on hospitals.
Absolutely. Well, thank you again for the presentation, and congratulations on the new stroke center. That is wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And Peggy, just the last, if there are any questions or additional information, here's a contact within Evergreen. I will say, as one ask of the Redmond Council is, if there are opportunities where we can better get our message across to the public, please feel free to let us know, and if there are areas where we can learn more from the public in terms of demands and, you know, some of the suggestions that we might have, we try to do many things on our own, but if there are opportunities that you know that we can benefit from, please let us know.
Thank you. I saw the Council Vice President with a question as well.
Just one quick comment and question for you. Just in terms of needs, one of the things that I heard a lot about this past year was the real surge in need for care for children, especially during the fall and winter, when there was the rise in RSV and COVID and other respiratory-focused cases, and just the amount of time that folks were spending in emergency rooms and not able to access pediatricians for weeks. And so it's something that I think, in terms of thinking about that planning and how you plan for capacity at different moments, I know that, I think, that, I think they were calling it a tripledemic that was going on at that time, kind of came out of nowhere. calling it a tri-poldemic that was going on at that time, kind of came out of nowhere this year, but, you know, thinking ahead of, of what could be done to be able to plan for that, because I know it created a lot of stress for families in our community. And then as a totally separate question, I was just curious, you mentioned that you decided not to put the levy on the ballot this year. Do you think you'll be revisiting that next year, or will it be several years out?
Yeah. Well, thanks for both comments. In terms of the, the children's need for care, you know, we have a great resource in Children's Hospital, but it's far away. And so we have been working with them in certain areas to make sure that if the need is there, to be able to admit, you know, children at Evergreen in conjunction with, with childrens. And so there, there is dialogue there to make sure that we have some resource on the east side. As far as a ballot measure, I think the real focus right now is on financial stability and really focusing the management and board's attention on getting to the post-COVID, you know, stage in terms of financial stability, because it's been very difficult over the last couple of months relative to that. I would say that we're not ruling out the spring of 2023 as the next time, but we want to do a number of things. One is that financial stability, we want to make sure that we can better understand the needs and the feelings of our, of our voters and get out some of the educational and communication that we're doing tonight, actually, to other, other venues to see if we're in a better position to, to be successful on a ballot measure. One of the difficult things right now, and I'm sure many of you can appreciate this, is the, the property taxes went way up in a lot of cases here in the spring of 2022. Home values rose, you know, last year and so forth. So it's a, it's a difficult time, and I think there's a lot of tax fatigue that's out there right now. Even though I think the eventual amount would be relatively modest in and of itself, adding a modest amount to the current tax burden of our, of our residents is, is not an easy thing to sell, right? So we're cognizant of that very much, and we're trying to make sure that we, when we go forward, we're doing it at the appropriate time. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? All right.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is items from the audience. Speakers have four minutes to address the council. Council members generally will not respond to comments or questions directed during the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayercouncil@redmond.gov. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak. When I read your name, please come up to the podium. You will have four minutes to address the council. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinions of the city council. As a reminder, RCW 42.17A.555 prohibits any public comment during council meetings in support or opposition of a ballot or candidate. First up is Hank Mardison, next Alex Zimmerman, and David Morton.
Thank you. I'm Hank Mardison. Live at 16135 Northeast 112th Street here in Redmond. This is my grandson Cameron, who's hanging out with me tonight. I have just a few comments. At first, I was hoping to thank Mayor Bernie in person for pulling the plug on the Salary Commission. Just a few thoughts on that. It was pretty apparent that the Salary Commission had an agenda. It needed to be paused, stopped, disbanded, those words I used in, in my email to council and to the commission, because I felt that they didn't represent the city as a whole. I thought that they were representing their, their positions. And remember that council member positions are not partisan, they're nonpartisan for a very good reason, and that's that you represent everybody in this city, not just those that voted for you, not that those are affiliated with any political, environmental, whatever, and just not, not even, not just like-minded folks. I served in this role. I understand what it takes to represent everyone, and I understand what it takes to be in your role. I sent a note to Mayor Council as, as noted, and then also the Salary Commission. I got a response that I would consider maybe not as responsive as I would have expected it to be, but I did get a few other courteous comments from other council members to the position that I was staking out. I was alerted to the Salary Commission situation, so I started doing my homework. I looked at their minutes. I was reading the minutes. I became a little, a little concerned. I didn't really feel that they really fully understood the implications, what it was very clear that they intended to do with this process. And since they were not hearing from what I would consider average citizens, what they were mostly hearing from were folks that had a cause, I decided to put my average resident hat on, which is what I am now and will be forever, and share my knowledge and share my feedback. Knowing that council members by code are required to attend all business meetings, that's two per month, this one here is one, and are expected to attend working sessions, that's two per month, plus one or two committee meetings, maybe more, I was aghast that someone could represent, that they work at a near full-time level doing this job. It's not a full-time job. That was before I read four council members' estimates as to how many hours they put in on a weekly basis. If I'd have seen that before, I really would have been upset when I wrote. Well, that was three council members, fourth kind of did an aggregate of what they did on a weekly basis. As noted above, I got a response from Ombuds, which I felt didn't necessarily hit the mark. I never heard anything from the Salary Commission, even acknowledging that they got my feedback, perhaps that's because their meeting was canceled, which I guess in hindsight was a good idea, because maybe leadership within the city grasped, this is not going where it needs to go, and it's going to be a problem, and I'm seeing the yellow light. My only response to council is a former council member, know what it takes to be successful, and I also know what it takes just to meet the bare minimum by statute. So the entire process was failed when you impaneled folks that didn't represent the full representation or full position of city. The tragedy in all this is that you guys deserve more pay, and now this has failed. And it's unfortunate, and I wish there was a way for you all to, to be fairly compensated, but where that place was, where that group was going was nowhere near what the average resident of City Redmond was looking for. Thank you.
I do not see Mr. Zimmerman, so next up is David Morton, then Roger Treppner, then
Good evening, esteemed council members and Honorable Mayor Pro Tem. I'm David Morton. A while back, I spoke about the possibility of generating hydrogen gas in Redmond for the purpose of fueling hydrogen fuel cell electric vehicles. Some environmentalists fear that leaked hydrogen gas can contribute to climate change by increasing the amounts of other greenhouse gases, such as methane, ozone, and water vapor, resulting in indirect warming. The Environmental Defense Fund has been raising the alarm about hydrogen's climate risks, but an innovative new technology can detect and measure climate-harming hydrogen leaks. If hydrogen is going to deliver what its backers promise, hydrogen must be kept from escaping into the atmosphere. A multitude of hydrogen leaks at a global scale could undermine the climate benefits that hydrogen is supposed to provide. Fortunately, new hydrogen leak detectors, like the one developed by Aerodyne Research, can measure small hydrogen leaks. Minimizing such leaks through good engineering, regular inspections, and producing hydrogen close to where it's used should be a key consideration in any hydrogen project. Now, the Environmental Defense Fund is helping to make sure hydrogen infrastructure is built the right way, benefiting the climate, communities, and people's health. They're working to prevent leaks and raising awareness about the best uses of hydrogen. On another topic, environmentalists have hoped the state legislature would pass a bill that would mandate addressing climate change as both a new goal in the Growth Management Act, or GMA, and as a requirement for local governments to include in their comprehensive plans. House Bill 1181 was passed, and those objectives were achieved. House Bill 1181 improves the state's response to climate change by updating the state's planning framework. This bill substantially changes the GMA and comprehensive planning process by adding a new section to the GMA related to climate change and resiliency, and adds a climate change and resiliency element to the list of elements that must be included within the local comprehensive plans. The Department of Commerce is mandated by this bill to create a model climate change and resiliency element and to publish guidelines that specify a set of actions that counties and cities can access to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and per capita vehicle miles traveled by, among other things, adding density in housing supply. House Bill 1181 will help build climate resilient communities in every city and county across Washington by amending Washington's Growth Management Act to include sea level rise and climate change planning. It mandates reducing greenhouse gas emissions from transportation while bolstering communities and natural resources against the accelerating impacts of a changing climate. It also adds a definition of environmental justice into the Growth Management Act, stipulating that our land use planning should work to achieve environmental justice and not worsen existing environmental health disparities. As the state's population grows and its cities and communities expand, it is critical we incorporate the best available science in planning a more resilient future in the face of climate change. A new climate change and resiliency element will make a wonderful addition to Redmond's comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Roger Treppner. After Mr. Treppner, we have David Haynes and John Marchioni.
Nice to be here again tonight. Last time I was here, I got thrown out, or almost. I went over my four-minute limit, is that right, four minutes? And I was confronted by a sergeant-at-arms who threatened, he had a gun anyway. This is at a time when you guys were looking for more cops. I said, where do we spend our time? Anyway, I'm here to speak about the, the salary issue. I can only get, I get information from other sources. You don't get it anymore. You don't have a community paper, which is a huge, huge deficiency in this city, because they did a good job keeping us informed on what was going on, but we don't have that anymore. The Seattle Times is not interested, and we lack the, well, the health to a community that comes from having a local paper. I moved here to Redmond 50, 1969, 50-something years ago. I served on the city council for three terms, beginning in 1976, 12 years from there. I served with John Marchioni's mom. I was city council president for a few years. But looking, I'm here to give some historical perspective on the salaries. When we started, it was $50 a month. When I got out after about 12 years, it had risen to 200 a month. And that's because we had people in this community who were concerned about the community and would do it for nothing. We had full-time jobs, but we had an interest in the city that led us to take some involvement in the city and not get too hung up on what we were getting paid. I was outraged to see what the proposal was for the salaries of this city council. I don't know whose idea it was, but it was stupid. I can't believe that they're asking, that you came up with this proposal. We, I was just shocked, and I felt I had to come out here to say something, that we did it back then for the love of the city. We sometimes fail to recognize our former government. This is not a council manager, I mean, a city manager former government. It's a strong mayor former government, which leaves important decisions to the mayor. The council is just there to deal with the, the issues that come up. The, the council today seems to have taken on more of a role than we anticipated when I was there. Back then, we didn't concern ourselves with the day-to-day stuff. We were concerned with policy matters, which is why we didn't spend so many hours a day navel-gazing, wondering what to do next. And I think what we've done here, we've gone, we've done a massive change to a different former government where the city is so involved in these little matters, you've created full-time jobs for yourself and say, well, we deserve this money. I don't know whose idea it was. This is crazy. We, we are, we are still a strong mayor former government, not a city council, city manager former government. I want you to keep that in perspective because what you're doing now doesn't make any sense, or whatever someone's proposing. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. To be clear, we are a co-equal branch of government, and council did not make any requests for salary increases. That was an independent salary commission.
What is a co-equal former government? What is that?
Mr. Haynes, you're up next.
What's a co-equal former?
We are the legislative body, and the mayor is the executive body.
What is it again?
We are the legislative body, and the mayor is the executive body. Thank you. Mr. Haynes, you are next, and then Mr. Marchioni.
I'm sorry, I didn't get his question.
I didn't pose a question.
You're shutting me up.
Mr. Haynes?
Right. Thank you, David Haynes, Overlake. I need to clarify to the city council that I'm adamantly opposed to the Turek Street cross-through between 152nd and 156th, and the only thing that will appease me is putting one of those speeding ticket enforcement cameras with a multitude of warnings for people, because even if you have a flashing light in a crosswalk that still hasn't been put there, people are road-raged, like with their toxic exhaust right in your face before you get close enough to the street, and it just, like, toxifies all the way up the hill. Anyway, there's other issues in the city, you know, like, you're trying to pass through Redmond, Marymore Park, and there's these gravel parking lots, and the one that's next to the remote-control airplanes, about 250 feet from the maintenance shop, it has all this big gravel that's been knocked into the street. And I was hoping that they could go over there and clean that up, but don't put it right back where it gets spun back into the road, because people are driving through that road, and they kick up a 10-foot plume of gravel dust right all over the crosswalk, and it totally screws up any, like, running or hiking or biking, especially if you're training for the Redmond Derby. Soon as you come up there and a plume hits, you got to turn around and take off the opposite direction, back to the lake for a minute. I know you're not that far, but it's ridiculous. Also, there's still other issues with needing to trespass all these junkie thieves who keep smoking, I don't care if it's a cigarette or crack, meth, heroin, fentanyl, they either need to be trespassed and ticketed, or at least ticketed, and then if they're doing the illicit drugs, they need to be sent to jail. And on the way to jail, the cops need to interrogate those junkies to find out where they keep getting the drugs, because they're driving through Overlake, and they cross the border, and they're gone. And they're creating these junkie thieves in the same spillover in downtown Seattle, because the same bottom-of-the-peril progressive policies are exempting low-level drug pushers. And you got these Wall Street investors coming in to do the behavioral crisis and the mental, trying to, like, shake down Medicaid, but you got to shut off the drug suppliers, and you got to separate these junkies and not allow them to just roam around voluntarily, like, encouraging them to break their habit. And you can't keep giving Big Pharma alternative, like, padded cost of all these, like, drugs that just keep on drooling on the bus, like, showing up to some location, and they're complete zombies, completely ineffective whatsoever. It's always looking for an excuse to exempt drug pushers, and no offense, make an easier payday for the police, who are trying to trick everybody into believing that the nexus is the homeless, when the nexus is the low-level drug pushers that the cops are refusing to go after. Every time they come across some junkie thief who's smoking on the sidewalk, ruining the entire front of the building, they don't want to question that person, because then that means they got to go fight some crime and find out where the drug pushers are and keep driving through. Well, I call the cops, and I find somebody, like, pushing that shit, I'm thinking I get to get a gun and take matters into my own hand, because the public defender at the 9/11 dispatch is arguing with me about the guy's not a drug-pushing trafficker, he's just about to take some woman, have her gang raped by his, like, thugs inside his apartment that he's paying rent on, that the Democrats are more concerned about him making ends meet, while society is imploding and cops are looking for more events for overtime getting rich. You see the same thing all throughout. It's like, Seattle destroyed the integrity of police reform, and every jurisdiction that follows along the progressives' policies of exempting evil drug pushers and looking for an excuse to racially discriminate against a certain skin color, because they got white privilege, who were innocent possibly and not drug addict, messed up. They want to redirect the homeless money to help a repeat offender who's bothering people in the business community. And it's like, they need to go to jail for 30 days and then go to drug treatment involuntarily. And, you know, there's other issues too, man. It's like, I would say that- It’s like, I would say that there’s a lot of people that are not represented by the council, but the council is lobbied by the people that are making money off of them, namely, all the foreign-born, non-citizen renters that work for all the tech companies. They’re being shaken down, ripped off, cheated.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Thank you, Mr. Haynes, your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Haynes, your time is up. Mr. Marchioni?
Is this on? Yes. Good evening. I’m here tonight to testify in support of the mayor’s action to disband the Salary Commission. The commission unilaterally expanded the scope of their own work, and that led to false conclusions. State law defines the city council position as quarter-time work. The Salary Commission tried to pay based on a larger role. Council work is a public service to represent the community’s voice and civic discussions. The Salary Commission exaggerated the position of council member and was in the process of creating a professional politician in Redmond. That would be exclusive and not building community. The Salary Commission expanded its own mission by trying to redefine the job description of a city council member. That is not their duty. The Salary Commission enlarged the scope of council member’s job to include more hours, more meetings, more responsibility than council members actually perform in a week. Counting hours for meetings with constituents and attending community events is part of the job, but you knew that when you signed up. The work listed in a survey does not occur every week. It doesn’t even occur every month. But the Salary Commission was assumed that it all occurred every week, every—or occurred in the same week, every week, for a whole year. That’s a lot of hours, and I have been a council member, and that—that’s impossible number of hours to do—you can’t do a month’s worth of work in a week. The Salary Commission inflated the council’s role and tried to equate it with the mayor’s. They are very different jobs. A council sets the guardrails for what the mayor should do. The mayor leads an organization of 700-plus employees in doing what the council directed. A council can play with policy ideas. A mayor must work specifically and concretely to achieve the city’s goals. The argument that the city should offer a living wage to encourage people to run for council is erroneous. The cost of council races would increase exponentially, because the prize is bigger. Only the wealthy could really run at that point. The cost of campaigning would exclude lower-income residents from participating in races. Instead of setting a salary for the position of city council, the Salary Commission erroneously defined the job of a council member and tried to insert a social equity policy that does not even work. I thank Mayor Bernie for stopping this madness. I’m sorry this issue has become so contentious, because as an earlier council member said, a pay increase is in order, but not at the rate that the Salary Commission was contemplating. Thank you.
Thank you. The Clerk’s Office received no request to speak remotely. Items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Consent Agenda has been moved by Councilmember Stewart and seconded by Councilmember Carson. Are there any items to be pulled? Seeing none. This is a roll-call vote, starting with Councilmember Fields.
Aye.
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 Okay, and aye. That passes seven to zero. And next up is hearings and reports. We have public hearing AM 23068, public hearing and approval of the Transportation Benefit District Assumption Ordinance. The public—I will now call the public hearing to order. Ordinance number 3123, Ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending RMC 3.93.040, assuming the rights, powers, functions, and obligations of the Redmond Transportation Benefit District and abolishing the governing board of the district as an entity separate from the Redmond City Council, providing severability and establishing an effective date. I have the sign-in sheet for the benefit district hearing, and I—we have Alex Zimmerman, I believe, and he is not here, and David Haynes, who is also not here. So, I will now entertain a motion to approve the Transportation Benefit District Ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
That has been moved by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Council Vice President Kritzler, and along with a high five. Pursuant to the ordinance, is there any discussion and/or consideration of the testimonies we’ve heard to date? Councilmember Anderson?
I’m thrilled with the testimony that we heard today. I’m also very excited about the establishment of a TBD and the next steps. I think we have one more step, if I’m recalling yet.
There are—a few more steps, yes.
It’s really important for our city’s transportation budget, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or consideration? All right, hearing none. Roll-call vote, starting with Councilmember Fields.
Aye.
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 And aye. That passes seven to zero. Moving right along, we are on to our ombuds reports for wrapping up. May is Councilmember Fields, and June is Councilmember Stewart. Councilmember Fields?
Yes, so, thank you. Actually, only three topics for my part of May. One, we received a very detailed email, and I’ve actually yet to respond, based on listening to our legislative agenda discussion and how seniors were not given enough consideration by the state on long-term care. I will respond to that email tomorrow. There was also in that same email some concerns about street safety and the lack of street safety. And we got an email, and I may have covered this before, but Washington Asians for Equity thanked us for supporting Chinese American—Chinese-American History Month, and invited us to a celebration for that. And then the remaining emails, I think we’ve heard plenty about the Salary Commission. In general, there were a lot of emails trying to call out council members, asking for the names of council members that demanded this salary increase. I sent one person a blank list, because as far as I know, there were no council members that demanded anything. There was an email in support of the Salary Commission, and a very detailed email concerned about the mayor’s action and the impact that has on volunteers. I think there were some later emails that maybe the next ombuds can speak to that came in June. Thankfully, my month ended on some limited response time. But I would like to—I did ask at the recent study session what council’s role in all of this is, and it’s—and we did get some response, but—and now we are seeing the Salary Commission has asked the city for a meeting and rejected the fact that they have been disbanded. So, I am still very concerned and very confused about the actions that the city’s taken. I don’t think we took a very sensible approach, and I would still ask our city attorney, what is it that city council should be doing or should not be doing on this topic?
Well, first of all, is my mic on? I’m sorry. Okay, good. First of all, as you know, the current ordinances provide that the Salary Commission is appointed by the mayor and is confirmed by the council. It also gives the mayor the power to remove salary commissioners for certain reasons. That is—the only role that the council has formally with respect to the Salary Commission is one, to create the commission, and two, to confirm appointments to the commission. There is no other role anticipated in state law for the city council. So, I’m happy to answer any other questions. If that doesn’t answer your question, Councilmember Fields?
Well, I think basically, the answer is, we’ve done what we were required and what was appropriate to do, and there’s nothing left for us to do on this topic.
That is correct. You have—you did create the commission. The council did create the commission back in 2011, I believe. The council this year passed an ordinance amending the provisions relating to the commission, which took effect June 1, Ordinance 3116, and the council confirmed the mayor’s appointments to the Salary Commission, so the council has fulfilled the role that the state statute envisions the council to have.
So, one follow-up question, if I can. So, in watching one of the public hearings, there were a number of attorneys present at that meeting that were not from the city attorney’s office, your office, and I suspect from that that we’ve hired outside counsel. And the question is, did—did that—and I don’t know that the city attorney is the right person to ask, and maybe COO Files can answer, but was—does that contract come under the purview of city council approval? Do we have a new contract? And if we do, when was that contract, and then what amount and what value is that contract? Because it looks like, from what I can gather, that the city has hired attorneys outside counsel to help facilitate this process.
I’m sure council—I’m sure that Ms. Files can answer that. What I do know is that there is a contract, and the mayor does have contracting authority below a certain limit, as you know, with respect to professional services agreements. And my understanding is that the mayor exercised that authority, and that there is a contract in place with a law firm other than mine that is provide—has provided advice to the mayor.
There is a contract in place. It didn’t reach the $50,000 threshold that would make it come to counsel, so it’s with Steve DiGiulio’s attorney office.
And just—is there a chance that it could reach the contract threshold for council approval?
Not at this point. We don’t believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Great. I’ll address that topic first, so we can wrap it up. We continued to receive a little bit of feedback on the Salary Commission in early June, and this morning, an email from attorney representing the Salary Commission requesting a special meeting. The first issue that we dealt with this month was a reported by a resident, some blackberries that were overgrown on a sidewalk and making it difficult for a wheelchair to pass through, or a pedestrian, or really anyone wanting to walk, bike, or roll through there. Public Works has already addressed the matter, and it is resolved. We also received a hefty bit of feedback from a resident who had some feedback for our city and ideas around adaptive signaling and pedestrian safety, and I’m actually working with staff on a response for this, because the resident took a really long time—to took a great amount of effort, actually, to put the—put the idea forward, and there’s actually a lot of work going on in this area, so I asked for some staff support to make sure we’re reflecting the work that is already being done. And since this is a popular topic, earlier tonight in our Planning and Public Works Committee of the whole, we did move forward the acceptance of a grant from the Puget Sound Regional Council to work on adaptive signaling here in downtown, which is so exciting, and had a lot of enthusiasm around the council. And that’s it so far for June.
Thank you. Any other ombuds reports? Council Vice President Kritzler?
I would just note, from my time as ombuds, I’m still following up on one item from a resident that has been dealing with quite a few different vehicles in their neighborhood that are persisting, and I’ve reached out to both our police chief, but also to Tisa Rutherford, to be able to look at the resolution of that issue, and just to make sure that if there are folks that want to be able to park in certain places, that maybe they could get connected to safe parking or other sorts of resources if they need that—that support. So, we’ll be following up with that resident some more, so—I think they have emailed the whole council as well as me directly, so—but I wanted to let you all know that I am following up on that. I also heard concerns from a resident about an issue around loss of power multiple times in their facility—or in their area. It seemed like due to some sort of wildlife issue connected with power, and so was able to connect them with PSE, who followed up quite a bit with them about some of the issues that were going on in that area, as well as more broadly, and it seemed like they had a really good interaction. So, appreciate Matt Larson from PSE being very comprehensive in that follow-up. And that’s all. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other ombuds reports? Mr. Carson?
Thank you. So, we—I thought—and I didn’t hear anybody touch on it, but the—there’s been a few emails from non-residents talking about the gate on 172nd, and I—I wasn’t familiar with exactly what the issue was, so I reached out to Director Burt, and he got back to me with a response, but it’s—it—it’s a fairly involved situation, and so I—I’ve had someone reach out to me directly, and obviously, they—I think they differ on—or they disagree with the city’s position. I’m not yet comfortable responding to them, you know, because I don’t think that I can represent their position to the city, but I honestly don’t feel I know the issue well enough. I—it has a long history, and so I think it’s a pretty involved situation, but I am concerned that there are folks that are interested in basically taking the city to some—some sort of a hearing to hash it out. So, anyway, I just thought I would make sure it was stipulated on the record that we’re seeing some email from—in that general flavor.
Thank you. Any other ombuds? Mr. Fields?
Thank you. So, this is a bit of a personal ombuds. Recently, at our coffee shop, my wife and I’s coffee shop, we had a customer come in with a tray full of Starbucks cups, and we thought, “Yeah, that’s a little odd.” And he—the person ordered a couple sandwiches, a couple coffees. He was by himself, and he already had a tray of Starbucks, and he handed our employee a $100 bill. She gave change, $82, and then fortunately, my wife, who’s been burnt by counterfeit $100 bills in the past, quickly grabbed the bill and discovered that it was a counterfeit $100 bill. Cornering the customer, we—he returned the change, the 82-some-odd dollars, did not ask for the $100 bill back, which I found interesting. So, he called the Redmond Police, and the Redmond Police came, and very polite, as usual. But the reason I’m bringing this up is because the police officer asked, “Do you want me—since you got your money back, do you want me to do anything?” And this goes back to something that I’ve mentioned many times to Chief Low and during council meetings. That kind of information needs to be catalogued, calculated. It may not sound much to those of you who’ve not taken 100 It may not sound much to those of you who have not taken a $100 fake $100 bill, but it hurts. And I suspect that that person probably passed a few of those counterfeit $100 bills that day, maybe even to the Starbucks. So I would ask again that we don't just dismiss these things. We actually do discovery and see if there's a, some sort of conspiracy behind it. Maybe somebody's giving these people $100 bills and say, you know, give me 20, and you can have this. And we don't know. But that's my concern, that we need to prevent those kinds of crimes, as well as violent crimes.
Thank you. I will jump in with my ombuds at this point. I responded also to several of the Salary Commission emails, mostly just to clarify that the council did not ask or demand a raise, that that was an independent Salary Commission. Just wanted to clarify that for the record for those folks. I also responded to the former mayor's email, where she discussed the potential mismanagement of the commission. And also responded to several emails around Salary Commission that were supportive of what was being discussed. Next up is our committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Councilmember Stewart, and then Council Vice President Kritzer.
Sorry, I'll go quick. We, I have three committee reports today. Earlier tonight, we had a Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. We had a robust conversation on a couple of items that we're going to come back to, including thinking a little bit more about the current role of our two public EV charging stations. Obviously, when they were installed and provided free charging to the community, they were to help motivate early adoption. And we are a city who had, you know, 30 some odd percent of new vehicles registered in our city last year were actually EVs. So we are well on our way to that early adoption. And as a result, we are experiencing a great amount of demand and long hold times at those charging stations. So we are, we reviewed a proposal from staff today and are going to come back to that. We're going to come back to a couple of other items from today. We also are going to have a hearing later this month on our six-year transportation improvement program, the TIP. This is important, because this is the list of priority projects that helps us qualify for funding in the city. So if that's of interest to you, tune back in later this month and come and chat with us. I attended the Growth Management Planning Council for King County earlier in May. We continued work on the urban growth area expansion policies, the four-to-one program. Final amendments were offered and approved to represent GMC's recommendation. It's now out for public comment. It's the latest milestone in a really long journey for decision-making. And while it doesn't have a very big immediate impact in Redmond, it does, overall, in some circumstances, will influence where we have more concentrated growth versus sprawl in and around the region. So check that out, if that's of interest to you. And like every committee that any council member attended last month, it was chock-full of legislative updates from the end of the state legislative session. I also attended the Growth Management Planning Board, where there was a recap, of course, on the legislature, and a really robust and healthy conversation on the transportation, the TOD, the transportation, oh my gosh, TOD. Transit Oriented Development, thank you. And a healthy conversation in our caucus, and then again, at the, at the committee level, for transit-oriented complete communities, which I think is just a sign that council members are paying attention in these briefings. We also had an overview of the support PSRC is providing to jurisdictions for the comp plans coming up. And per our staff, the process of, you know, beginning to review the draft elements and working with PSRC is going really well for our part. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Kritzer, and then Councilmember Anderson.
I was able to attend the second countywide stormwater summit, and was invited to speak on behalf of Redmond, as well as RIA8, specifically about the work that we've done in terms of our own planning around stormwater and our watershed plan, and also our experience collaborating around especially salmon recovery and work around clean water in our area. And it was a really amazing summit, lots of different partners there. There were over 300 attendees, representing local governments, nonprofits, tribes, and other stakeholders. And really cool to be able to hear from a lot of different groups. And I think one of the top lines is that there's going, there's a goal to, there's a couple of key goals that they're hoping that everyone can get on board with, one of which is to be able to cite 30 stormwater parks across the King County region. We already are moving on one in Overlake, and some other projects related to that. So I think that's going to be really interesting for us to be able to track, and cool to just be able to share out. Want to give a huge thanks to our staff that gave me a bunch of amazing talking points, and actually, I think, just even preparing to speak about all the work our city's done. I learned actually a lot more about the incredible work that our staff is doing day-to-day. So just want to say thanks to our staff for the work they do, and providing that information. And I think I heard a lot of feedback from, from folks that they'd like to even see some of our plans, as they're beginning to do some of this work in their cities. And then the only other thing is, I just wanted to note that I appreciated being able to join, along with a couple other council members, the Public Works Department Employee Lunch, and for Public Works Week, and enjoyed getting to chat with some of our Public Works employees, and appreciated that. I'm not sure if that actually fits in committee reports, but side note there. And happy belated Public Works Week.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Great. Got three reports for committees. On the 24th of May, the day after, I think, our meeting, I attended the Cascade Water Alliance Board of Directors Meeting. It was pretty standard. One point of note, our chief executive officer is currently being served by an interim, which is the former chief executive officer Chuck Clark, for some time off for Ray Hoffman at the moment. It was a pretty standard agenda. And we talked with the City of Sumner on a White River Restoration Project. That's sort of the item of interest. Additionally, I attended the Healthier Here Board of Directors, and that is an organization that's a collaborative nonprofit organization focused on health equity and eliminating health disparities throughout King County. We had a new, new board members appointed for the meeting, and our first meeting for the new CEO, that transition process has been enlightening, being part of that organization as this, as a representative of SCA. Additionally, I attended the June Public Works Board Meeting, which was on Friday. So this is within about a week, quite a bit of time. We opened the 2024 Traditional Program Cycle. We have, if you have a chance, as council members, please send a note to your legislators, both the 45th and 48th supported the Public Works funding. There's a 221.8 million dollar cycle open officially due July 7. And just fun fact, Redmond is one of the only cities on the east side that has a Public Works Board alone, so I made sure to send a note to our legislators, thanking them for that, restoring the funding to the Public Works Board account. We also opened a broadband cycle as of today, with awards anticipated December 1 for about $13 million. And we also set new interest rate policies for nondistressed, distressed, and severely distressed communities throughout the state. So pretty, pretty high-level work this week, this month, and it was, it was a pleasure to serve on all of those groups.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Councilmember Fields.
Earlier today, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee met for two hours, and we reviewed the council input that we recently put together and asked the staff to take back to the committee. They did. And we had a really good session, a fairly clear understanding of the kinds of things that the LTAC Committee would like to see, partnering with other communities, partnering with some of our large businesses, like Microsoft and others. And then, as a result of the meeting, there were two recommendations that will come to council. I can't remember exactly when, sometime in the next month or two. And I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. I'll jump in with my committee reports. I attended the PSRC Regional Committee, and we voted, where we voted on the budget. There was also a presentation by 880cities.org. Highly recommend everyone check out 880cities.org. Talks about doing the mobility math from ages eight to 80, age 80. So if, and if it's good for an eight-year-old, and it's also good for an 80-year-old, it's going to be good for everybody. So I thought that was really interesting, and the presentation was pretty fascinating. I have asked for that presentation, so I can pass it along. Hopefully, we will get it soon. Just following up on this, questions from the study session, the last study session we had, there are going to be a lot of upcoming opportunities for council members to volunteer at Derby Days, and a lot of opportunities for us to be attending events. So please keep an eye on your inbox for those. I know there's already one in there from Mr. Brown. And then, following up on the question that was surrounding the Salary Commission, we all received the email from Mr. Haney about what council's role was. But I wanted to make note that council did have the right, council members had the right to attend public comment at those Salary Commission meetings, which was not in contrast to what we were told initially. So I wanted, unfortunately, we didn't have that opportunity, but I did want to follow up and make sure that everyone was aware of that moving forward. All right. Next up, we have new business. Next item of new business is AM 23069, Delay of Ordinance Amending RMC Chapter Titles 15.8, Building Code 15.14 Mechanical Code, 15.16 Plumbing Code, 15.18 Energy Code. And Director Helen will be introducing the item.
Good evening, councilmembers, and thank you, President Forsyth. I am here tonight to provide a status report on the state mandated updates to the Building Mechanical Plumbing and Energy Code. We briefed the council about these updates back in their Committee of the Whole meeting for Parks and Environmental Sustainability in May. We received direction at that time from the council to place the updates on the consent agenda for this evening. You'll notice they are not on the consent agenda. You also asked that we touch base with Government Affairs, One Redmond Government Affairs, to seek their feedback on the updates, and just ask if they have questions. And that was the plan for May. We did meet with them, and you asked if we got, received any feedback, to share that with you. What transpired between your meeting, your Committee of the Whole meeting, and that One Redmond Government Affairs meeting, is that the State Building Code Council delayed the adoption date of the, all of the building-related codes to, for 120 days. That, the reason that they did that was, they were directed to convene two technical advisory groups to consider stakeholder proposals to modify sections of the commercial and residential energy codes, that had been the subject of quite a lot of stakeholder feedback. And any modifications that they would suggest to those codes would be actually in direct response to a Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decision in the California Restaurant Association versus City of Berkeley case, that was from earlier this year, that addressed the prohibition of gas infrastructure into commercial and residential buildings. Because the stakeholder feedback may result in changes to the codes that we had before you for adoption, and the ones that had been proposed for mandate by the State Building Code Council, our adoption has been delayed. And we anticipate that the adoption will now need to occur prior to October 29, which is 120 days from the delay vote that they took. And staff and I will plan to bring back closer to that adoption timeframe adopted language for your consideration and review at that time. Because the fire codes were already adopted, well, because the fire codes were already adopted at the May 16 consent agenda, the prior fire code has to be readopted, and Scott Turner will join me to answer any questions you have about that. But if you have any questions of me about the building code adoption, I would be happy to answer those. Because of the delay, actually, One Redmond Government Affairs didn't have any feedback at this time.
Any questions on the building code? Councilmember Anderson.
Just procedurally, so the new code is or is not in place. I know the fire code is, but the energy code is not. So do we need to take action to delay action?
No, you had directed us simply to place that on the consent agenda. It's fine right now. This, what actually, the adoptions are actually kind of a cycle behind. So the 2018 Building, Plumbing, Mechanical, and Energy Codes will remain in effect until such time as new ones are mandated by the state. And ours will have to become effective on their timeline.
Okay. And just to clarify, I understood from reading the agenda, it says the action that's requested for new business is to delay the adoption of the codes.
Oh, yeah.
So I just wanted to understand if we're receiving information, and we need to actually make, take a vote, or we should perhaps defer this item to.
I apologize for that. I was probably a little bit, I probably tinkered with that title a little bit much. It was really just because I knew you had directed us to bring that back on consent, and I wasn't doing that. So I wanted to make sure you got the status update, and knew what happened to it, and closed the loop with you. And so there is no formal action needed. I'm just informing you that you need to delay at this point in time, because the state has directed us to do so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Council Vice President Kritzer.
I know there were quite a few pieces that were within this, this energy and building code change. I'm curious, since it seems like part of what the State Building Code, State Building Council is, is reviewing, is a section, a piece of that, and, and kind of what they're contemplating, is, are there any pieces that we might want to move forward on sooner, while potentially waiting on that, that one piece, to be able to look at how that goes down with their review of the legal decision?
The State Building Code Council addressed that question, and delayed all of the updates. We have to adopt on their schedule, and so none of the updates can go into effect until all of them go into effect. They are interrelated, and oftentimes cross-reference one another. So they felt that it would create confusion. We actually cannot adopt the mandated updates until the State Building Code Council make, has an effective date.
Okay. Thanks.
And just for good order, I will introduce the next item, Ordnance Number 3124, Ordnance of the City of Redmond, Washington, Amending Redmond Municipal Code Sections 15.06 Fire Code in Order to Re-Adopt the 2018 International Fire Code and Subsequent State Amendments Declaring an Emergency and Establishing an Immediate Effective Date. Scott Turner, Assistant Fire Marshal, I hand it to you.
All right. Thank you, Director Helen, for kind of laying the groundwork for that, so I don't have to re-explain it all to you. I'm here to make a request that's similar, but not identical to what Director Helen just explained to you. It is not identical, because we had an unintended omission on our, on our amendment that did not have an effective date. So therefore, the Ordnance 3121 went into effect five days after you approved it on May 16. So right now, we are actually have the International Fire Code being our adopted, in the 2021 edition, being the adopted code. So our request here is that we amend the recent code adoption back to the 2018 Redmond Fire Code, but we have three exceptions that we would like to make on that. And those were described in the June 2 email that Fire Marshal Todd Short sent to you. I can describe those if you would like me to, or if you all read and understood those, I could skip on to.
I saw a yes nod, so please go right and, right ahead and describe them.
Okay. Yeah. So the first exception was related to code modifications related to the fire sprinklers in RMC 150616. The second one was clarification of fire flow requirements, specifying minimum fire flow requirements for buildings. And then the third one was expanded use of documentation processing fees in support of our system reliability program. So those are the three exceptions that we will be keeping. And we can keep those, because they are independent of the, of the 2021 International Fire Code. And they're, it's important code, and I think it would be best for us to implement immediately, as opposed to waiting the 120 days until October 29. So we did consult with Mr. Haney, and he So we did consult with Mr. Haney, and he recommended that we take immediate action. The problems with us operating under the 2021 code are that, well, it's in violation of the state code that says we need to be on the same edition as the state. So that's obviously a big problem. Also, it can create a lot of confusion with the staff, permit applicants, the public, on what edition are we using? And lastly, there potentially could be some legal challenges related to the city's code and legal issues related to vesting of application dates. So that's our ask, to have it be an immediate actions that would take place today.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Anderson.
Do you want questions or a motion?
Entertain questions first.
I don't have any.
Okay. And seeing no other questions, I will entertain a motion to approve AM Number 23-070, Ordnance slash Ordnance 3124.
I'd like to move the adoption of Ordnance 3124.
Second.
Thank you. AM Number 23-070, Ordnance Number 3124, has been moved by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Carson. This is a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Fields.
Aye.
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 Aye, and that passes 7-0. That concludes new business for this evening, and there is nothing else on our agenda for this evening.
Can I make just a quick question, completely out of order, I'm sure? But I had a member of the public ask me, he's here on behalf of what David Carson was talking about with the gate, and he was wondering if there's any chance that he could still speak. Now, I know, I told him it wasn't part of the process, but I also told him I'd speak up on his behalf.
I appreciate that. I will look to the fellow council members if they are willing to entertain another four-minute public comment. It is outside of our regular business order. Anybody have any objection? Seeing no objection, I will, the judge will allow, if that person would like to come forward and give a four-minute testimony.
And my husband, the tall gentleman that just walked out here, back in.
Okay. This is highly unorthodox for us, but...
Thank you for opening up to talk to us, even though this is highly unusual. Well, it was unusual for us to have the fire gate that is on the corner of 124th and 172nd Avenue within the city boundaries, but we live in unincorporated King County.
But we do run a business in Redmond, just down the street at ThinkSpace. Me?
Yes.
So, sorry, I ran inside. My heart rate's going really fast. I represent the friends of 172nd Avenue.
Would you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry. Oh, my name is Jason Cap, I'm sorry.
C-A-P?
K-A-P.
K-A-P. Thank you.
Mr. Haney, it's nice to see you again. We remember each other from the Growth Management Board, where the fire gate was put in place. We are telling the city that it would be unlawful to open the gate until you've put the mitigations in place that are required. You may have received other advice, I'm not an attorney, but we believe that is our stance. What's important this evening is that even though the city has told, is publicly on the website right now, says that the construction won't begin until late June, we were told by somebody who works here in City Hall this evening, that you plan on opening it tomorrow. And I just wanted on the record from the council that no such thing will take place, that you're going to stick to the tiny amount of notice that has been given to the public, which is this website, only after we caught the crew working out there, that indeed, we're not going to go faster than we have claimed, so that we can let the process go through. By the city's own estimates, there will be a car every 7.2 seconds during peak hours. That traffic will go to Clara Barton Elementary School. Those are school-aged children that are the crossing guards. One of them had their flag hit last week by a speeding car. If you add 500 cars an hour, that's 7.2 per, every 7.2 seconds per car. If you add 500 new cars during peak hours, the city will be liable for that. Because that's settled law, very well-settled law in Washington, that substandard road design actually leads to municipal liability. So our ask is, slow the roll, stick with what you've already said publicly, and we'll go from here. That's our request. Are there any questions? I don't know how this works, so I apologize if I'm way out of order. Are there any questions? Do I ask that?
Councilmembers, we do not generally answer questions during this time. And for next time, sign up usually closes about five minutes before 7:00. So if you'd like to speak at our next regular business meeting, sign up starts around 6:30.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for speaking tonight. All right. If there's no objection, anything for good of the order, we have concluded our business, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate the grace.